I will now call the September 8, 2009, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We will stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We want to welcome all of you in attendance tonight to tonight's meeting, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7. The next order of business is a consent agenda. We have three items to pull. Item A and B has been requested by Councilman Solon, and item H has been requested by staff to remove from the consent agenda. I would now accept a motion to approve the consent agenda except those items that I asked to be pulled.
Summons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilwoman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilwoman Foulle?
Aye.
Carrie, with Councilman Edmondson, missing.
Okay. Item A on the agenda, Councilman Solon.
Yes, I have asked for this to be pulled. It's the minutes from our last meeting, and the reason was because I wanted to add a note to the minutes. And if you look at your minutes on page one, right where it says, "Approve City Council Minutes," I would like-
Hold up a second, let us find that.
It's the very first page. And at the end of "Approve City Council Minutes," I would like to have the following note added to the minutes. The negative votes on the consent agenda reflect opposition to an item on the check register.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is a motion to add that notation to the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion from any of the members?
Whoever voted no, wouldn't you assume that was an objection?
Could be interpreted that way.
Yes, but there was more items on the consent agenda than that, and I was one of the ones voting no. And that was, there was discussion prior to the meeting about this, and the discussion was about the check registers and not about the other items on the consent agenda. So, just trying to clarify the public record.
Any further discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Everybody understands that the votes would still be shown the way they are.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve it with the insertion? That we just, yeah, we still need to approve it with the insertion?
So move, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay. Next item, B, Councilman Solon.
Yes, I asked this item to be pulled, and I am going to be on the record as probably voting against the check registers, probably from now until the future. On the last check registers, there was an item on there that I didn't approve of. There's another one on this one. Basically, we are having a change in our city policy where there's going to be an entertainment expense budget of $200 a month, and over that, the mayor can approve. And this won't be done the normal way, which is you fill out an expense report, and it goes through proper channels. I don't agree with this change in policy. If we do change our policy, I think it should come to a vote of the city council. I believe that things should be done openly, and I believe that when we're spending the taxpayer dollars, I believe that any money that is spent should have checks and balances in place, and I believe the procedures that we currently have in place are good. So I will be voting against the check registers this time and probably every time until that policy is actually voted on.
Councilman, that means that you will be pulling the check register each council, each council meeting?
If there are-
To do that.
Yes, I will.
And let me qual, let me clarify, let me qualify, and you can clarify what you're doing. Basically, it's a council policy of which you are a member of, but you oppose the consensus of the council, and as a result of that, you want to pull it every time so you can vote no.
I would disagree with you somewhat from the fact that there was never a vote taken. This was discussed in executive session, strongly opposed the change in policy. I don't believe there should be an entertainment account to conduct city business. I think this is a wrong policy, and until there is a formal vote of the council, I don't agree that it is with the consent of the council.
Now, if, if an executive session, and this is an item that should have been discussed in executive session, which we did, we did not take any formal votes, but we did get a consensus, and because you object, your determination is you don't support the rest of the council's decision?
I don't necessarily contend that it's the majority of the council if there is no vote taken.
Well, I guess the point, and I'll get to you in a minute. I guess the point that I'm making is if a council, if the council from a consistent standpoint makes a decision that you agree with, you'll support it. But if it's something that you personally disagree with, then you will oppose it.
I believe I have to do what I feel is the right thing to do. I feel that to set up $200 a month entertainment on our last check register, it was $410.99 for bar and grill expenses. I do not believe-
That's, that's a misrepresentation.
That was what was on the check registers. I do not believe that it is in the taxpayers' best interest to have a policy in effect that $200 a month, and over that, the mayor can approve, without explanation, without an expense report being submitted, and without proper checks and balances in place.
Is that correct?
And I have to follow my conscience and what I think is right, and when I feel that something is being done that is not necessarily following good policy and good procedures, I have to vote against it. And if that means, what you're saying, that I go against the rest of the city council, then so be it. I don't feel this is the right way to spend taxpayer dollars.
Well, I think you're spinning it in a way that projects a negative image of what we're trying to accomplish in moving this city forward. It's no different than any other city employee that do submit an expense report, and it didn't say he would automatically set up to, depending on what type of activities he's doing on behalf of the city. This isn't done on behalf of the city administrators personally. These are activities going on on behalf of the city.
And I guess I feel if you're conducting city business, you can do it at City Hall, and you don't have to be-
Obviously, we're going to disagree on that because I know how the real world is, and I know how you get things done.
So I will, for the record, be voting against the check registers.
Duly noted. Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, I, I agree with Councilman Solon on many of the points just made. I certainly would stand against the rest of the council if they were taking me down the wrong direction. Entertainment expenses, if this was a profit-making business, and we were making profit, then spending entertainment expenses may be okay, you know, bar and grill tab, a drink here or there, that kind of stuff. I understand, I understand that.
Let me interrupt you, Councilman, because you're spinning this as if he's going out to bars and grills, and, and I don't want the public, nor do I want this audience-
That's what the tabs were for.
-or the rest of the councilmen to get that impression that that's what's happening. But, but the two of you seem to want to spin it that way.
There was 54th Street Bar and Grill, there was Clancy's Bar and Grill, there was Hereford House.
Do they not serve food?
Yeah, they serve food. Okay, but I don't think it's appropriate that we have entertainment, an entertainment budget. I don't, I don't think there's any room for it, and when you're talking about spending the taxpayers' hard-earned dollars on that.
You know, I keep hearing the word that taxpayers, that taxpayers, and we all represent taxpayers.
I'm a taxpayer.
And so is everybody else on this council?
Yep. And I, I vote that I don't want-
Okay, and certainly it's your prerogative, and Councilman Solon's prerogative, to vote any way you want to vote. But what I have a problem and object to is the way you're spinning it is for something that's negative, is something that's, we want to hide. Nobody's hiding anything. Everything is open for-
Then why didn't we do it in an open session?
What do you mean? Why don't we do it-
Why didn't we do this, why didn't we have this discussion in an open session?
We had this in executive session while performing the city administrator's performance review.
It's a policy?
You all had plenty of opportunity to discuss it that night, and the majority of the council was in agreement with the policy. The two of you are the only ones who objected to it. Well, you're not the majority. It's six council members, and four council members didn't seem to object to it.
May I just make a positive-
Yes, Councilman Reed.
-comment? I mean, practically every restaurant in town has a bar and grill unless we just want to take them to Winstead's or Chili's or something like that. And I think when our administrators, you, anybody takes somebody out for a dinner where you are discussing city business and things like that, I doubt very seriously if it's the bar portion that they're sitting in. And I'd just like to accentuate the fact, it is a meal, it's designed to provoke business, it's an economic development tool, because that's just the way business is done. It's no more different than the people who spend a lot of time on the golf course and get a lot of business while they're out there on the golf course. And I'm not talking about city business, but I know a lot of people that, that that's the way it works, and I want it to end on a positive note if at all possible, because I think this is a positive thing to do. And it's a very minor sum of money, because you'd only have to go to Hereford House maybe two or three times to equal that in a month, so.
Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Lauer?
Yes, thank you. I recall in the August expenditures that the $400 you're referring to was the amount that we had decided that he could be reimbursed for, and that was from the beginning of the year, from January, so it's not been $200 a month every year or every month through this year, so it's been a very nominal amount. And I agree with Councilman Reed in that this isn't conducting a business. But the other thing that is concerning to me is that if we want to set a precedent of whenever we oppose something, then we vote no for that from here on out, as long as that exists, that puts this whole council and the movement of this city in, in very tight straits in order to be able to get things accomplished. So I'm very concerned about that.
Any other comments? Let me see if anyone else want to comment before I go back to you. Okay, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. There are okay uses of tax dollars and there are not. There's things that I just don't agree with, so if I choose not to vote for them, I certainly won't vote for them. I think that I'm, I'm here representing the taxpayer. If the average taxpayer, as such as myself, chooses not to support this kind of activity, then I can certainly talk about it, and I'll bring it up at the council meetings and, and state my objections.
And, and no one's going to question you bringing up a discussion. I just want to make the point known that the consensus of the council was that we adopt this policy. The policy has been adopted, it's in place, and certainly you, you're free to vote any way you want to vote.
Sometimes the herd goes the wrong way, Your Honor.
Right, right. Because the point I really want to make, rather than the two of you just representing taxpayers, we all represent taxpayers because we were elected by taxpayers. Two of you from each district, and I was elected at large. So we were all elected by taxpayers. That being said, did you make the motion? He made a second? Did we, are we there yet? Recap, recap where we are. Oh, there has, we just had discussion prior to the motion? Okay. I think we've probably gotten our discussion done. No one else want to make any more comments about it?
I'll move to approve the register.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call it, please.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
No.
Councilwoman Lauer?
Aye.
It's a resolution, so it's approved.
May I would just like to end again on the, on the part that Mr. Johnson is not going out and drinking and, and using these dollars to, for his personal benefit, nor for anything extravagant. It is in the line of business, such as with the MU individuals who are over here and having lunch with them and so forth, so I do not want this to come across as this is just willy-nilly money spending at all.
And, Your Honor, in response to that, my concern is that we have had checks and balances in place where you fill out an expense report, the cost is justified and explained, and I believe we need to continue with that is the way we handle when someone goes out to lunch or pays for someone else's lunch. My objection is to the fact that we're given carte blanche of $200 a month, no questions asked. That's, that's my situation.
Now, I'm only in the main note, that is not the case. There are still checks and balances, there's still an expense report that reflects all those things. That being said, we're going to end a discussion on that one. The next item on the agenda are two public hearings, and we'll accept that with one motion that needs to be continued.
Do we have H yet?
Items four and five.
I thought we pulled H.
H is to-
Been removed.
Been removed.
Oh, been removed, okay.
It wasn't to discuss this removed.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So we need to open the public hearing on annexation of right-of-way on 7th Highway and Coburn Road from Jackson County, and also the annexation of right-of-way from, on 7th Highway and Coburn from the state of Missouri. And then we'll need to, and after we open them, we need to continue them to the September 21st council meeting.
Sumo, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, there are no exhibits, so it'll just require a motion and a second to continue those to the 21st.
Okay, there's been a motion, there's a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Next is introduction and reading of Bill 4076. Oh, I jumped right over it, I was going to try to postpone that one, too. Okay, we do have a public hearing that we're going to have. It's a public hearing on the 2009, 2010 budget. And before I turn it over to Mr. Johnson, I want to compliment the staff. They've worked extremely hard in bringing to us a very well-defined, conservative, yet workable budget. All you have to do is turn the news on, and you'll see a number of cities that are experiencing problems and having to make cuts in services. We didn't have to do that. We maintained the level of services that we've always had, and we were able to do it with its budget. So I want to compliment Mr. Johnson and his staff for doing a fine job as they do, and, and I know that they continue to do, on behalf of the citizens, or should I say taxpayers of Blue Springs.
Your Honor, this particular public hearing, I'd like to offer one exhibit, which includes a city council information form from Finance Director Christine Kates with attachments. Also includes a budget in brief and affidavit of publication, it's advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner on August 19th, 2009. Like to offer these for this particular hearing, and Your Honor and City Council, I'd like to just make a few brief comments for the record. The budget was submitted to the city council on July 31st, 2009. This is a requirement by the city charter that it actually submitted on August the 1st. We then conducted a budget work session with the city council on August the 13th, 2009. There is a required public hearing to establish the 2009 property tax levy. That occurred on August the 17th, 2009. And also on August 17th, 2009, Bill Number 4073 was adopted by the city council establishing the 2009 property tax levy. During that time, we've received some requests and some inquiries from the city council. Staff has responded through the Assistant City Administrator Todd Pelham and our Finance Director Christine Kates. We have provided the city council with additional follow-up through the weekend review. Tonight, September the 8th, 2009, is the required public hearing for the 2010 annual budget, and assuming that this moves forward, the city council will consider the ordinance to adopt the budget on September 21st, 2009. Like to just briefly highlight some of the items included in the budget. Total budget before you tonight for this public hearing is $89,511,568. The submittal includes all operating debt service, special allocation, and capital funds. The, what's before you tonight does reflect minor changes to the budget. These changes were discussed at the August 13th work session. Specifically, there includes a reduction in grant funds for two police officer traffic positions. We made you aware that we received notification that we would not be receiving those grants. And in addition to that, this budget reflects an annual allocation for debt service required due back the Adams Farm bonds that were recently issued. These, these changes are consistent with what we presented to you and discussed on, on August the 13th at the work session. Major sources of revenue have, are being, are projected to grow by 2.25 percent. Operating expenses overall are projected to grow 1.36 percent. Those are all funds combined, and our general fund includes 2.18 percent anticipated growth. There are 200, approximately 281 positions being funded in this budget. This proposal does include six new positions, all related to the police department, some of those being only funded if we receive grants that we have applied for. This budget proposal maintains existing service levels that currently exist today. There are some new equipment purchases that are being funded in the police department with a focus on, on equipment, which we've also discussed with you at the August 13th work session. We're pleased that this budget also maintains all of our reserves, our contingencies, and designated accounts, and meet the policies that are established by the city council. This budget includes a capital improvement budget, consistent with the plan that this council adopted on June 15th, 2009. There are a couple of changes and amendments to that proposal. We also discussed and made you aware of those on the, at the August 13th, 2009 work session. The capital improvement program is highlighted by $2.5 million annually for our street maintenance and rehabilitation program. One of the major components in this budget, which you're aware of, is $31.9 million, which is projected for the Snybar Sewer Plant Expansion Project, which was voter-approved. And, Your Honor, these will conclude my brief remarks. With the budget being adopted, we will have all of this information available on our website, and as we always do, we will post and provide our local libraries with copies of the annual budget, and staff will be happy to answer any questions that the city council has.
Are there any questions of staff and council members? Basically, you've heard it before as we did at the budget workshop. Seeing none, we will now open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of the budget? In support of the budget? In opposition to the budget? Opposition to? Seeing none?
Your Honor, before you close the public hearing, I did have some comments for the public record.
You just caught me just in time.
I sure did.
All right, Councilman Solon.
Yeah, I had a few comments. I wanted to hear from the public if there was anyone here who wanted to address us before I made my comments. First of all, I want to agree with the mayor. I compliment our staff for reducing administrative costs across the board throughout this budget. Just briefly, the finance department cut expenses by $59,000. The parks department cut $4,000, which is, which is great. I know they have a lot of parks to take care of. The golf course cut their expenses by $14,000. Codes Administration cut their costs by 15 percent, along with Public Works, and Public Safety even cut their spending by $51,906. Every department is trying to save money during these tough economic times, and we truly appreciate everyone's efforts to try and do that. The only department that is not tightening their belts is the Economic Development Corporation. They're budgeted $300,000 a year. There have been no recommendations by them to reduce their costs. A 10 percent reduction would be $30,000 that we could put to good use with our budget. This should not present a hardship to the EDC, since the CJC Fire District has pledged $30,000 of taxpayer money to help support the EDC. So in my opinion, that money could be offset with the cuts that I'm recommending. Also, our contract with the EDC, which is coming up for renewal next month, actually states that during extraordinary budget issues during the course of this agreement, the EDC agrees to comply with any unique request from the city to reduce budget spending. Such requests would be consistent with any other budget reductions or financial amendments imposed on other city departments and/or services. I think everyone will agree, these are extraordinary times. Every other, every other department is cutting expenses, and the EDC should also cut their expenses. Some other items that were in the budget that I believe probably when we have our next city council meeting, I will recommend that they be taken out is under human resources. The city is budgeting $25,000 to hire a consultant to perform a comprehensive compensation analysis for all job descriptions and positions. In the budget, it said this is necessary to make sure we remain competitive with other cities in the Kansas City metro area. I believe this is an unnecessary expense at this time for many reasons. First of all, all employees' salaries are a matter of public record, and our own budget in the very back, it lists salaries and salary grades. Other cities do the same thing. This is certainly information that we could gather ourselves without spending money on a consultant. Secondly, we were barely able to give our employees raises this year of 1.7 percent. If we spend this $25,000, and the consultant comes back and says that our staff is overpaid, we are certainly not going to cut, pay people salaries. If they come back and say positions are underpaid, right now, we don't have the finances during these hard times to make substantial increases. So I believe right now, spending this $25,000 is really, it's not the time to do it, and we certainly could do this work ourselves. In the planning department, the city is budgeting $10,000 for consulting services regarding updating the UDC and other plans. Last year, I chaired a committee that updated our codes and ordinance for multifamily. We did this because we have an excellent professional staff. We had help from the HBA, we had help from many volunteers and community leaders, and it was done without the help of a consultant. We are now reviewing the comprehensive plan. Again, this is being done by our highly skilled staff and with Planning Commission members, and it is being done without having to pay a consultant. I believe that the work that will be done as far as updating our commercial codes and with our single family can be done without the help of a consultant. I believe this $10,000 can certainly be taken out of the budget because much of the hard work we can do ourselves without spending the money on a consultant. I'm also very happy in the budget that we are giving our police officers much-needed equipment, such as tasers and high-powered rifles. I, again, am going to encourage the police department, like I did the work session, to always come to the city council and recommend any equipment or any amendments to this budget that they need in the future, because I know the city council wants to give our police officers everything they need to do their jobs. We do have six new positions, three detention officers, if we get the grant money, a crime analyst, a detective, and a K-9 officer. And a K-9. I'm glad we're adding new police officers. When Emile Spears gave his presentation to the city council for the Public Safety Advisory Committee back on May 4th, he said that in order for the city of Blue Springs to meet the national recommended average of patrol officers, that we would need to add 23 new police officers. Also, in our 2009 citizen survey, the number one priority of our citizens on public safety was to have more visibility of police officers on the streets. I believe if we tighten our belts, that we can add a K-9 unit and an additional patrol officer, which I think we truly need. If we make some of the recommendations, changes that I have made here, if we do a 10 percent reduction to the EDC, that's $30,000. If we do not have the consultant hired for the employee compensation analysis, that's $25,000. If we don't hire a consultant for the planning department, that's $10,000, for a total of $65,000. And I believe with this money that we're saving, we could afford to hire another patrol officer. Right now, in the city of Blue Springs, that's what I hear from citizens, that we need, we need to fight crime. Crime is up. I know that we say it's not, but that's what I hear everywhere I go, that crime is up, the economy is bad, and times are hard, and we need to add more officers to our streets.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does, and I, tonight, I guess my question would be, tonight is not the time that we can make amendments to the budget.
Tonight is not the time to do that. They can stew over what you've had to say, and certainly on the 21st, they would have had enough time to process what you said, but I will caution council members that council members make recommendations well within your rights, but I would hate to see you micromanaging departments. That's why we pay them to run departments. I do want to make a correction. EDC is not a city department, although there- EDC is not a city department, although there's some language in there that talks about how they might be able to work to accommodate some of the wishes of the majority of the council. They are certainly not a city department.
No, but they're-
You had made comment in public records that they are department, as you talked about other departments.
Right. The taxpayers of Blue Springs supplement $300,000 a year to the EDC.
We know that, we know that, that they get money that we fund, like most municipalities do fund their Economic Development Corporation. It's a partnership, it's a public-private partnership that's designed to bring economic growth to a community. And we can sit here and debate this all night, because I love to debate on that one. But I'm not going to take the time to do that. Certainly, council members, you heard Councilman Solon's comments. I would imagine that you're going to propose making some amendments, offering some amendments at the next council meeting. So it will be up to each one of you to decide whether you're supportive of it or not. That being said, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, we'll have an introduction and reading of Bill 4076.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4076, an ordinance approving the final plat of Lucy Franklin Elementary, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4076, an ordinance approving the final plat of Lucy Franklin Elementary, Lot 1.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Seconds.
Good discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Carried with Councilman Edmiston absent, giving ordinance Number 4259.
Thank you. Next, Bill Number 4077.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4077, an ordinance approving the final plat of Blue Springs High School, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4077, an ordinance approving the final plat of Blue Springs High School, Lot 1.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried with the Councilman Edmiston absent, giving ordinance Number 4260.
Okay, next introduction and reading of Bill 4078.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4078, an ordinance approving the final plat of Thomas Altekin Elementary, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'll second the first one, though.
Okay.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I have just a question and clarification. I noticed in reading this that the stormwater basins are being dedicated to the city. I was wondering why.
Okay. Would that, who would that be?
All of us.
Okay, Mr. DeGrae?
Mr. DeGrae?
Okay, would you pull your mic over there and make sure it's turned on and answer the Councilman Shaver's question.
Councilman, I do not have a good answer for you, but I can provide that information for you tomorrow. I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you. Because that's highly unusual, is it not?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, Mr. Allen, you have something to say on that one?
Your Honor and councilmen, that was information given to me by the city engineer, but they were, detention basins were completed just a few weeks ago, so they are constructed. It's simply just a paperwork technicality that, as Mr. DeGrae mentioned, we can clarify the rationale for that, but they have been constructed.
Let me clarify, maybe I don't understand. I assume dedicated means they will be owned by the city. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's what it normally means, Councilman, yes.
It may just be a misnomer in terms of how it's identified there. Dedicated through, as a part of, that is, the final plat prior to it being recorded. So that information showing the stormwater detention basins need to be included on the final plat. As Mr. DeGrae's mentioning, I don't believe that means that they will be owned by the city.
I tell you what, since there is a question mark there, why don't we second read this at the next council member meeting so we can have some clarification on what it means? Mr. McDonald?
I would agree that we ought to do that and make sure we don't end up with a couple of detention basins that we got.
Yes, so the second reading will be continuance until the September 21st meeting. Do we need a motion to do that? Motion table?
Just table it.
Okay. Motion to table?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That will be tabled, hopefully to be brought up at the September 21st meeting once we've had some clarification. Thank you for asking that question. That brings us to mayoral announcements. Before we meet on the 21st, there is some activity that will be going on downtown, hopefully very well-attended. Like National Night Out on Crime was well-attended, way greater than my expectation, with 5,000 people convening on downtown, which is good exposure for downtown. But on, what's the exact dates, the eight, what's the exact dates? Let me see here, I got it right here. I won't have to ask you all, I'll just read it. September 18th through the 20th, the Fall Fun Fest will convene downtown Blue Springs. And hopefully this year, the weather will be favorable for that activity and not have tornado warnings and all the things that went on last year in the downpour, the rain, especially during the parade, with convertible tops down and people riding in those convertibles. So we want to announce to those that are watching, please plan to participate in that. It's one of the great things of where we showcase Blue Springs, and we're able to bring people in from all over the region to enjoy the festivities. And I know all council members will be participating, and I'm sure staff will be as well as we worked to make it another successful Fall Fun Fest in Blue Springs. Those are the mayoral announcements that I have. Next, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. No, visitors. Don't want to, I think most of the visitors are either staff, chamber, or press. Any staff, any chamber, or any press like to make any comments? I don't have a speaker's appearance form on you, so I guess you can. Now, will it entertain a motion for adjournment?
So who?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.